Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Those of you who are also joining us in the audience. I want to recognize our city staff, who is present with us today, and our invited guests. Also want to acknowledge my colleagues on City Council here with us today, and our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our city attorney, Ms. Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. Thank you all for being here, and welcome to the first meeting of the Portsmouth City Council of 2025. I will now call to order and ask that the invocation take place, and we will ask Reverend Dr. Tonia Pass, Brighton Rock AME Zion Church, to please come forward and provide our invocation. May we all stand?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for just allowing us just to be here on tonight, and just to see another year. And before we begin to ask you a litany of things, we first just want to tell you thank you for what you've already done. We pray not only for ourselves, but we pray for our neighboring cities and countries that are under attack even now. We pray for our city. We pray for our council. We pray for those who are in charge, those who serve and represent the people. We pray tonight for clarity of thoughts. We pray for our families, and we pray for those who we serve, and we thank you for it. Give us peace and harmony. In Jesus' name, amen.
Six members of City Council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we do have the minutes of a called meeting, December 10, 2024, and a regular meeting, December 10, 2024. Also, we have a special call meeting, January 2, 2025, and a reorganization meeting, January 2, 2025. Is there a motion to accept our minutes?
Move adoption.
Second. If a motion in a second, please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted six zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please read the council rules for our speakers?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body, rather than any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now moving to our next agenda item, which is public hearing. Item 25-13, Public Hearing on Rezoning and Use Permit Applications, Item AZ-24-03. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing ordinance we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. West Haven ordinance granting the request of AQ Contracting, Inc. to rezonate .07 acre parcel located at 3719 Dartmouth Street from general mixed use to urban residential to permit a single-family residence. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed use. Planning Commission recommends denial, and the actual ordinance reads zoning amendment ordinance Z2403.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, ma'am. If you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Sure.
Oh, excuse me, 10 minutes. That's correct.
Yeah. Can you give them to them just in case? Yeah, my name is Claudia Aristizabal. I'm from AQ Contracting LLC. And when the five minutes start, sorry, the 10. I'm going to pass something that when we went, when came here in November, they were asking that the building was kind of high, then we did some changes to see, to make a two-story building instead of three. That was one of the main concerns for the use. Then one of the things we were proposing, I'm a real estate broker of Virginia, too, and one of the things that we have is lack of like affordable homes for military people, new construction. Portsmouth, the average income for a house is like $280,000 a house to be, and that's one of the things that we are proposing because most of the people that are be able to afford that, they have to buy houses that are no fit, or they cannot fix it. And military people, there is a lack of houses in the price range in new construction in all the cities. And this is why we were looking here to, to, to do the rezoning. And it's going to benefit the, it's going to benefit the community. I was planning to propose something like Hunter's Bill, that the lot, the houses were kind of bigger, but the architecture, you can change it to make, to make the house looks more like the community than, I don't know, you see, is up next, is next to, you know, to a commercial use, but what they are going to put there as a commercial, doesn't make sense to put something commercial there. One of the things I was planning, maybe I asked the same owner in that, our line length, maybe we can move the lines and make the lot bigger, but right now the lot is 30 feet lot, and we can do 18 feet by 50, that give us 1800 square feet house. And it's going to be only two stories. Now, we are proposing two stories in a cell three to make more even into the community. And also, we were planning to make that side more appeal to, like, you know, to do like Harry Plank or something that better for the community. And, ah, sorry, I was just thinking.
Take your time. You have 10 minutes, so take your time. You don't, you don't have to rush through the process.
Yeah, no, because one of the things that they were asking was how the, the city, the things for the neighborhood that we were like, really, they were, I was looking even to what to do commercial, but I don't know what to do commercial there. I think the best thing of use is really residential because there is a lack of residential use. There's a lack of residential in 280. Like, when you go to 275 to 350, new construction, you only find two houses in Portsmouth, two or three. You don't have houses, and all the houses that you have, flippers, that there is, I flip houses, and I know some of my people up there, they don't do the best job. Then sometimes when buyers are buying flip houses, is, is there is a lot of things hiding in these houses. And if you can afford something that's 275 for a new construction, that would be great for, for like, like, really, like, entry level, military people, everybody's looking at Portsmouth because Virginia Beach, you can all, Virginia is crazy, Chesapeake, Norfolk is getting up there, then really, I see a lot, I'm selling a lot of houses in Portsmouth because it's no, there is, the cities are becoming really expensive to live on. And more, now that we have to do interest rate at 7%, 8%, a house that's 20, 200 square feet is a $2,500 payment. Who can afford $2,500 payment in a, in a $40,000 income? Not that many people, you know, it's kind of, this is why we are proposing to see we can do a rezoning for this lot for, to do, to do a single-family house. And not only that, the city will go from making $300 and more a year to make $3200 a year on that house, the same lot, and it's going to benefit the city. It benefits the city, also benefits the citizens. And that is the thing that I was just planning to do, just to benefit everybody. And not only that, by creating houses, you know, the best thing of the economy, we are bringing also jobs to the community. We are bringing like 15 families per house is how much like, you know, the sheetrock, the pain, everybody benefit for new construction. This is how you reactivate the economy back in 1930s. 19 something was highways, houses, and this is how you activate the economy. Right now, the economy is not doing that great.
Do you have something to add, Danny?
Okay. No, sorry, I brought Dana because she's, he's a military guy, and he used to serve as a Marine, and this is one of the reasons I asked him to help me, he's my right hand. And, yeah. But he's, the other one, that is it?
No.
Okay. This is one of the reasons that I want to help the military people because I, I think they are doing so much for us, and we are not doing enough for them. And not only that, people in general, but that's one of the reasons because it's difficult to tell a VA guy that he can't afford a house, or he has to buy a house that needs repairs, or a fixer-upper, and they don't have a clue what kind of contractor to use. It's really, it's like, I'm a Class A builder, and sometimes I have to do some deal with some of the colleagues that is, you know, they don't do the best practice up there, and you find guys that bought a VA house and a thousand of repairs that they were disclosed of. And this is why, for me, I'm pushing to do new construction for more affordable homes in different cities, if it's possible. Okay. One of the things that they were asking was about the appeal of the thing, because before we were proposing a three-story and thinner house, now I'm doing like, the thing is going to be 18 feet by 50, that will give me 1800 square feet of land, of 1800 square feet of construction, and that way we can do only two story in a cell three. Then the first time, I put three-story because I was like, oh, but I didn't know, after I started saying, oh my God, I can feed another house that will be wider and shorter and will be more appealing according to the neighborhood, and this is why we, you have it on the end of the amendment, that is the two-story house, and it's like, was one house that we did in Hunter's Bill, and was with Harry Plank, it was really nice and appealed to, to the area.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that all you have to, to share with us about your applicant, application?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that, they said about the lives, we can't, that one, we will do it in the site plan, the grading, also, we are planning to do in the site plan and everything, and, and if the city, you know, depends what the city will, will tell us, because I really believe that, that is, I really believe that it's always, when it's a no, it's always a yes with things attached. Sorry, this is because when I do with loans, I said, I know how much it qualifies, they give me, I don't, how much it qualifies, and what is the things that I have to do to qualify?
Yes, ma'am.
Then that is the thing that I was thinking, okay, there is, there is, I work with Alan Resch in Virginia Beach, you know, he's not that easy to work with, but he always showed me, it's like, Claudia, there is always a thousand way to skin a cat. Then I know city needs affordable homes, I know there is a way to do it, and maybe you said, okay, this is a nice lot, but just do A, B, and C. We want to see this in this lot to make it more appealing, more, more affordable for people, and that way we can get in a medium ground.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Ms. Aristizabal.
Hey, call me Claudia. I can't even say that name either.
Okay, I will call you what you prefer, Ms. Claudia. Is that fine?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So, we, we may have some questions
Yes.
from my colleagues on City Council. Are there any questions for Ms. Claudia, from our members on council? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My question isn't for Ms. Claudia, it's actually for the city manager and your team, sir. So, when this came to the Planning Commission, they recommended denial based on the three-story design and the, and kind of not fitting in with the, the location that, that was, was proposed for, for construction. Has the two-story design come back through planning, and has that changed the planning recommendation from denial to, to approval?
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to need some assistance from Dr. Russell on this reply, if you don't mind, ma'am.
Yes. The proposed design revisions, I'm just being made aware of at the same time that you're being made aware of.
I know.
Ma'am, just, just, just let her finish, and then if you want to have a conversation, we'll, we'll allow that. Go ahead, Dr. Russell.
Having shared that, let me see if I can't get this. There we go, I saw it. Trying to, the lot is, is adjacent to a commercial developed property, and it's staff's opinion that transition between residential and commercial uses is better served by combining that property with the adjacent property, and so that change does not change the staff recommendation. Additionally, there are no proffers with respect to the design of the residential structure, whether it be a three-story or a four-story structure, that would require that the applicant build what they are stating they're proposing at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Is, is, my questions to the manager, I guess, back to Dr. Russell. Isn't it a residential building right adjacent to the empty lot?
To the west?
Mr. Manager, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, ma'am. He's asking the, the lot that is, if you're facing that, a lot to the right of that lot, there's a, there's a building there that looks like a residential structure. Is that a actual residence, or is that a business?
The property to the west?
Yes.
Is a residential structure.
Okay.
Yes.
So, getting back to Councilman Hugel's statement, what was planning more concerned with? The, the, the fact that it was going to be three stories, or the fact that it's adjacent to other developable commercial property? I didn't, I didn't understand what, what the Planning Commission, what they based their decision on.
Actually, I think what she just said was, excuse me, actually, what was just stated was, the plan to build three stories was not presented to the Planning Commission until now, so that was never considered. But the actual lot itself, being a transition lot, would be better served, it was, if it was combined, rather than used as a, a single residential, a single residential lot.
Okay.
Well, sorry, I want to, it's because it's my first time here, there was my mistake, because when I, I, like, I was doing the thing, I said, wow, I can't do this, and I didn't put the amendment and everything, because I thought whatever was said there was set in stone. Then this was, that was my, my fault, because I didn't check that we were able to amend it before the meeting and everything. Then was, sorry, Mrs. Rose, it was really my fault because of lack of knowledge, lack of, I don't have experience coming here. Then it was my fault.
Well, I really like your enthusiasm and the fact that you know that there is a lack of affordable housing in our city, and you're willing to, to build like houses. But it sounds like, Mr. Manager, somebody maybe needs to explain the process and what of planning and what, what needs to be done for her to properly present what she's trying to do, and perhaps even identify some vacant properties?
Or maybe, I was thinking, I don't know, if that's feasible, to move the property line closer to, closer to the other property that's already commercial, and make the lot bigger for more appealing.
Yeah, but that, this is not the body that would decide
Yes, ma'am.
be able to do that. So, I would suggest that you go back, refine your presentation, and make the proffers on what exactly you, you want to build, and maybe re-present it. That would be my opinion.
Mr. Manager, you have the floor. Ma'am, you can take your seat now. You can take your seat.
Yes, I'm going to ask Dr. Russell if she will speak with her, kind of give us some directions on how to move this forward, if you choose to do so, by going back through the process again, and, you know, making sure you adhere to whatever the schedules are for that. But, Miss, Dr. Russell will actually help you move that process forward, and give you information anyway, so that you can make a decision whether or not you'd like to move it forward.
Okay. And I'm sorry, it was really lack of, yeah, was my fault.
That's not a problem.
And that's, that's fine. You can take your seat now. Council, Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question for, I guess, city manager, but it would be directed to Dr. Russell, I guess. But did I hear right that the Planning Commission thought that the 30, the lot in question, 3719, would be better combined with 3715 to offer? Is that what you were saying, to offer a more, a better transition between residential and commercial? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, take, sit a minute.
The Planning Commission vote was, I believe it was a split vote, so it was like, two members of the commission supported the proposal. The staff position, which we presume based on the discussion and the outcome, is that the commission supported staff's recommendation that that parcel that is the subject of the request is better served as a transition piece between the commercial development and residential development. And so earlier, I stated combining it with the commercial piece. Alternatively, alternatively, it could be combined with the residential piece adjacent to it as, as well, to give you some viable use of that narrow lot.
Okay, and then, do I direct my question? I have a follow-up question then. Okay, thank you. So, if I'm reading this right, and page four of this public hearing, 3715 and 3719 are owned by the same property owner? I might be, it says, "To the east, the adjoining lot is a commercial office facility under the same ownership as the subject property." It's the last line on that. I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding that piece, because we were talking about the transition and combining, you know, just options of combining either more commercial lot or more residential lot, depending on which direction.
So, I'm on page four, and so what line?
The very last line on that page, "To the east, the adjoining lot is a commercial office facility under the same ownership as the subject property." Is the subject property, the 30, the one for the hearing, 37, 32, I'm sorry, is that 30? 37? I can't, I don't have my glasses, but yes.
That's 3719.
Okay, 3719. Are those two properties
Properties.
the same owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, you're saying, I'm just trying to get the thought process of the planning department. Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you all. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, and if you wish to come and speak on this public hearing item, you can come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
My name is Donna Biggs, and I'm thinking, I always think, that was this brought before the Civic League of that area, so that they would have a voice in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this item, you can come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Seeing no, seeing no individuals coming forward, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we're in need of a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move to deny item Z-24-03.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically. And would yes be to deny?
Yes, would be to deny. A yes would be to deny.
This item is denied five to one.
Thank you. Our next item, item B, Z-24-04, South Street and Elm Avenue, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing ordinance we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. South Street and Elm Avenue, ordinance granting the request of Satisfied Home Builder LLC to rezonate an approximately .78 acre parcel at 1001 Elm Avenue from Light Industrial to downtown General Urban to develop a 30-unit multifamily dwelling. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed use, excuse me, mixed residential uses. Planning Commission recommends denial, and the actual ordinance reads zoning amendment ordinance Z2404.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Mark Parker, I'm with Satisfied Home Builders. We chose this site because it's been, you know, revitalized for at least like the last 20-plus years, been vacant. And so, just to give you a little bit of history about our company, we, we are located here in Portsmouth at 4404 Westonofford Road in the Churton area. We've been in business 13 years now, here located in Portsmouth. Done about 70 to 80 properties throughout the city, new construction mainly, and a lot of renovation and rehabbing of homes. We're proposing to go further into more of the commercial side and doing apartments and things like that. I'm a native of Portsmouth. Actually, I grew up on this street here as a young kid, so I remember, you know, actually playing or walking the sidewalks of, of this area. So, it does mean a lot to me to come back and, into the community and, and do some developing, and especially in the neighborhood that I played at as a kid. So, some of the things that this actual structure, I don't know if you can pull up the actual building site, this is what we're proposing. It's similar to what's going on in the, in the local area of this district, the downtown area. It's County Street where we have the Holly Point Building, and, and now as we go further down to off of Elm, running into High Street, we have the Bang Point site that's being actually broke ground down and being developed as well. And so, we just want to be a part of what's coming up and going on now here in Portsmouth. You know, as I said before, and I told everyone that I'm planning to be here, I love giving back into this, to this city, with some of the headaches we all endure, but, you know, just being diligent about it and, and continuing to move forward and try to, in this case, provide some, some housing for some professionals. We're not building anything that's going to be requiring a housing voucher or anything like that. We want to have some professionals living here. And then also, there's, I think, we have about 60% one bedroom, and the others are, are two bedrooms. So, with that being said as well, it's not like it's going to be a lot of, of people, for lack of a better word, but. So, we don't look at, as we have 30 units that we're proposing to build with 45 onsite parking spaces, and we do have the space for that. We have the engineering, things like that here to support us and ask any questions that you may have with this site. And we did offer a proffer as well. We want to stick within the 30 units as well. We did withdraw one of the proffers that we proposed as far as the exterior design based on what it actually could cost to build us. And so, we didn't want to limit ourselves to just one design based on budget. So, we did leave the room open and re-put that actually proffer back. So, some of the other things that we have here, I chose as well, is that there's going to be a secure entrance. We didn't want actually folks coming in from outside and walking by and, and kind of like crossing through, so this will be fenced in or gated in as well. There has an elevator as well. And so, I feel with the secure entrance, you know, it kind of keep the, the good people out, or the bad people out for that, for that case. Also, as we looked down, as I spoke before, as some of the other districts, or not districts, but on High Street area and county, they're also already zoned as T4s and T5s. So, we're about 1,000 square feet from just, or one block away from what's already taking We were We were in the beginning, you know, getting votes and during the planning commission meeting, and then that's when we actually proposed that we wanted to do some proffers. So they kind of withdrew those approvals as we started, they stopped in the middle. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Let me see here. I want to leave anything out, but. The pricing of these, we're looking to try to be a little bit below what the market is asking. I think that is in the notes as well. Just wanted to give this opportunity and do something with this site. Have spoke to the Civic League, and they was in support of it, so Ms. Pam Wood was just here and to support as well. So I think we tried to cross all our Ts and dot Is in before we came before you all.
Is that all the content you have to answer?
Yes.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions for the applicant? And sir, could you state your name again, the first and last name?
Mark Parker.
Mr. Parker, yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for staff. When I was looking at the transcript from the planning commission, it was made reference by city staff that at that time that there was not a proffer. However, if there was, the recommendation would have been differently. According to the packet that we received, that proffer has been submitted to the city, so the city now has that proffer. And I just want to confirm that that is the case.
Mr. Carter, sir, can you address that? Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'm going to need Dr. Russell again to assist with this.
Councilman Tillage, as I understand the question, does the revised proffer statement impact the staff's recommendation? And that answer is no, sir, for a couple of reasons. So the specific prescriptive language in the proffer states the proposed development will be limited to a maximum of 30 units. And I went back to this slide because it shows the zoning adjacent and surrounding the property. The T3 zoning permits a maximum of 20 units per acre, so the, it's, it's 10 units an acre above what the surrounding area permits. And then more importantly, that condition does not guarantee at all that this is the product that would be built. There's no, there are no guidelines, no provisions for the design of the units. And while this is proposed, that's, there's no promise that this is what we'll get.
Okay. Because I'm a huge proponent of ensuring that we have housing that attracts specifically young professionals. And looking at this rendering here, sir, I do believe that that would attract, it has that appeal to it. But from my understanding, you said that there's not promised that this would be the product.
It is not. And the, the conditions that are proposed, which are voluntary, and they have to be voluntary, only limit the number of total permitted units to 30 units per acre, which is above what is permitted, or even more so than permitted, the character of the adjacent development, surrounding development. So the T3 permits a maximum density of the 20 units per acre. The applicant is proposing the T4, but proposing to limit it to the 30 as opposed to the 55.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
I think that actually might answer my question, but regarding, oh, sorry, this question would be for city manager, but, planning. So it's currently, so the rezoning for this to work, and I understand what you're saying now, because the surrounding parcel, the, what planning might have recommended was D1 T3 because of the surrounding area. Okay. Applicant is requesting, Mr. Parker, the T4, which I get now. So I think that partly answered my question, but it is currently zoned for light industrial. And I was trying to look up the uses for light industrial, which, okay, that is just, that is just light manufacturing, assembly fabrication. So the applicant would need to do what, like kind of resubmit for the proper zoning request because of the surrounding parcels? Is that, is that how that works? No.
May I, may I respond? So the, the industrial zoning does not permit what they're proposing. So what they proposed is the D1 T4 because that gets
Them to the 30.
Yes, the density yield that's required. So the second part of your question was they would be required. So this application seeks to change the IL zoning designation.
To T4.
To T4. They could propose any other designation to meet.
And go back through the process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Parker, did, I assume you had this conversation with planning and considered D1 T3 as a, as an alternative? And it sounds like if you had gone that route and limited the density to 20 units, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now.
That's correct. And, you know, originally, with the, with the 20 units, you still have, I think it's a 20%, what is it called again? 20% bonus. So I think that would give us like 24 units. But with 24 units, a structure like this is, it's not going to be economical. And so that's why we was pushing for the 30, which is only six units difference. And so with the 30 units, even if we was to change to T4, the reason we put the proffer in for 30, because T4 would allow up to 55 units. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And so we wanted to stay at the 30. We've invested a lot into the structure that you see. I have no will to change it at this point at all, but I don't know if it was just cold feet or what, but we did go in to say, hey, I wanted to like, say if this wasn't going to work, that we didn't have one second option. And so that's why we pulled back on being just stuck on this one, one site. Just to let you know about our company, we've done, you know, developments here in Portsmouth, and we've always had great remarks about quality of work. You know, Mr. Glover, we've spoken in Civic League meetings in regards to projects I've done. You've always said they were fantastic and things like that. Been an honorable man here in Portsmouth. I've been up here several times. I've seen, you know, this, or here change. And so this is what we propose to, and this is what I would love to do. And I think it's beautiful, and it's going to be great for targeting the youth. There's not a lot of new structures like this in Portsmouth. And I spoke before on a demographic study about how over 50% of the housing here in Portsmouth was at the time over 45 years old, and it just wasn't quite, you know, appetizing to the new generation or younger folks, as well as a lot of those homes are only at 1,000 square feet, which it just doesn't meet the taste family as far as closet space and, you know, the way we live and, and, and having more than what we actually need. And so that has been a problem in the past, and that's why we've renovated tons of homes here out here, especially in the Cavalier Manor home, Cavalier Manor section of Portsmouth. And so like I say again, we've been here 13 years and look forward to doing 13 more, or 13 plus more years here in Portsmouth. And this is the product that we're planning to do as moving forward and trying to do more apartment buildings as the company grows.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I, and I am trying to get the yes here. So I guess my question to the city manager, so if we approve, then he's got a pathway that could take him all the way to 55 if, if he chose. Is there a pathway to 30?
City Manager Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, I'm going to defer to Dr. Russell, who is a subject matter expert here. I can give you an opinion, but I need you to get the actual, yes.
Councilman Hugel, the applicant has proposed a condition that would restrict the number of units to a maximum density of 30. So with that, that provides that pathway. Staff's concern is that with that condition alone, it does not guarantee you the product that is shown before you in terms of style, material, and design.
Can I ask that, you know, when we all come sometimes to present things, and is it that what some folks present, and such as speaking for myself, that we come to be misleading in regards to not building the structure that's proposed?
No. Sir, I don't think that is the issue that we had before us here today.
Okay.
What we as staff only recommend, and we're only going by what the letter of the law actually allows us to do. We absolutely think everybody is an upstanding citizen that comes before this board, and they're going to do exactly what they say. But at the end of the day, what you're asking the staff to do is to sign off that they can guarantee that this is going to be what it is, and we can't do that.
Oh, I understand.
Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the comments from the Economic Development Department, which stated that this is described as intense for this area, and this gets to the discussion of how many units the development is. Can manager or staff explain to us what intense for this area means? We are comfortable with 30, we're not comfortable with 55? If 30 goes into this spot, all things go according to plan, and the, the building is 30 units, what are the impacts of intense for this area? And have we, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that the Civic League supports this, has been consulted and supports it, also thinking ahead to how this might play into the Innovation District, which is nearby.
I'm going to say that it will be difficult for staff to interpret what somebody else meant. If that was our comment, then absolutely we could give you an opinion on that, but that's somebody, somebody else's comment, so it's going to really be
It was a comment from the Economic Development Department, and, and maybe Dr. Russell could even comment on that. The feeling is that this is just a little too much for this spot, is the sense that I'm getting, and I want to make sure what I'm hearing is that we don't have control over it going even up, up even higher to 55 units. Am I correct?
So the, the second part of your question about controlling, going higher, the proffer, the proposed proffer limits that. The first part of your question, if you don't mind, I'll read the whole thing. From the Economic Development Department, it says the proposed zoning would provide for a quality residential development as well as provide for the development of a vacant lot that could be added to the city's tax rolls. A development with 30 units would equate to a density of 38 dwelling units per acre, which is intense for this area. A zoning to URM or D1 T3 would provide for a more appropriate number of units to be developed. And so it, density, or would probably have been a better word than intense there, and so I suspect that the intent was that, that a density of 38 units per acre is high for this area, given the pattern and character of surrounding development.
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Fortunately, the economic department is actually in the building, so I just had a conversation, a sidebar conversation with Mr. Donahue, and he's willing to come forth and kind of explain to you what the intent was for the comments made by the economic development, if you're so inclined to hear. Mr. Donahue, if you don't mind.
And sir, if you would step aside, please, for a moment.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and thank you, Mr. Carter. The Economic Development Department comments with respect to the application. We're in keeping with the planning department's staff report and recommendations as it related to density. So in terms of intense, we were referring to the, the density that was being proposed at a T4 zoning designation, which was what the request was. So our comments related to the surrounding existing developments of URM and T3, that what was being proposed was a greater density and more intense than what the existing community currently provides, just in terms of density. I hope that, Councilman, Councilman Bryant?
Yeah, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to visualize is if your recommendation that this is just a little too much for this area, I drove by the spot, I know the character of the other residences that are there. You know, that's sort of a feeling that this is just going to be too much in one spot, and, you know, we have proposed to us a project that looks meaningful and is creating housing, but is a little too far, but if we scale it back, it's not going to be profitable for the developer. So I'm just trying to kind of gauge in my mind what too intense looks like. Are we talking about just traffic, too many people, too, it's just, it doesn't fit with the character, it doesn't blend well for the neighborhood? I'm, I'm just kind of thinking through those points.
Sure, and I think that's open to interpretation. I think it's a number of those things that were the reasoning behind our staff comments to the planning department, and in particular, the density units per acre for that project that was being proposed.
Thank you, sir. And the applicant, Mr. Parker, you can come back. Councilwoman Thomas, and then Councilman Tillage and Councilman Moody, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Just to clarify, so I did have a chance to drive by as well. Is the, the church, the property that is next to the church that's right there, is that still operational? Is that part of the property that you're talking about developing as well?
The church is on another parcel. There hasn't been much activity at the church since COVID.
Because I know they park there sometimes when they have, so they park in the parcel that's going to be developed. And so had you had a chance to talk to the church that operates there as well?
No, I have not. I talked to someone years ago when I first bought it, purchased the property, and they was asking what did I propose to do at the time, and I didn't know at the time.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around the, we definitely need housing, and you mentioned that you're from Portsmouth, but I, I'm trying to wrap my head around the, what would work in that spot, being that I think is Ebenezer Plaza right there, Westbury, so the very condensed spot, and I know people park there for the church for, when they do have events, so I just wondered. Thank you.
Prior to purchasing, it was mentioned that, you know, a storage facility can go there, being that it was light industrial. It's already zoned for that.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think I definitely want to get to a yes as well, but my question is in regards to when we're looking at the different zoning classifications. You know, you have light industrial in the middle of residential area, and we're talking about five additional units, because according to city staff, the proffer limits the project at just 30, not 55. In addition to that, if a development were to come here that would fit into the light industrial category, I mean, there's a possibility that you would have more than 55 individuals at a time at that location anyway. And so I think that this kind of leads me to my point here. I think it's important that we have like a level of service that's presented to us, because when we're seeing to look at the, the different densities of these different projects, it's kind of hard to determine what's suitable and what's not suitable when, you know, we're categorizing as a T- when, you know, we're categorizing as a T4, which limits us at 55, but we're having a proffer that says, okay, we're going to limit it at 30. But yet we can use light industrial and still have same type of traffic there, but because it's not T4, it's a different situation. And so I think it would benefit us as a council to have the level of service that we understand the traffic patterns that will be occurring, the number of projected individuals that will be living there, so that we can also use that information to plan accordingly for our infrastructure needs, et cetera. But, I mean, I'm comfortable with voting yes with this project with the understanding that we have 30 units. It's five more than what some members of council are asking for, and we're in desperate need of affordable, not just affordable, but just nice homes or housing for individuals to, to live in. And then just right up the street, less than a quarter of a mile, I mean, we have apartment buildings north and west of this location. And so I don't, I don't see much of a issue with me. So I'll be voting yes on it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I'm in agreement with Councilman Tillage. I think it goes back that we need affordable housing, and we need housing for the demographic that you mentioned, young, young folks, people that we're trying to attract to Portsmouth and to our communities. 30 sounds reasonable. And also, it was mentioned that the pictures, we can't be assured that that's what we're going to get. Well, we face that every project that we approve. We, we, there is no guarantee sometimes of that, but, but we, there's a way that we can request that in, in proffers on the quality of the materials and what, what it's going to look like. So just to say, well, we, we, we're not supporting this because we're not certain what we're going to get, that, that's just brushing it off. And I think we need to be more proactive and try to get to yes, while adhering to our codes and what have you. And it's not like Mr. Parker has come from Mars. I mean, he grew up in the community, he's got the support of the Civic League, and I think common sense dictates that we move forward with this project based on the 30 units that I believe I heard Mr. Parker say would be acceptable.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I'm all, along with Councilman Tillage, I'm going to support moving forward with the, with the project.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is going to be Councilwoman Thomas. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to add on to that. I do think we need the, the development there, but I do have a, a concern about the, the density. And even just when we are trying to be consistent, and I'm trying to be consistent with our comprehensive plan, I think we might need to look at some of that, but being consistent with what's in the area, the way that Dr. Russell explained it with the surrounding T3, even if we went to a little less to make it still economical, under the 30, but maybe, you know, 25, even a little less dense, I think would be better. And then my other concern is just the impact that, I don't think it might be too much impact, but just the discussion with that church, because even though that's not their property, I guess, but just that discussion to happen. I just, my personal feeling is to be consistent with what our overall strategic comprehensive plan is, is saying for the surrounding area. I'm not that comfortable with the, the T4 designation at the time, so.
Well, we've reached out to the church through letters. I have staff member right here that we've sent letters, and we don't get a response.
Okay, and that's not the, the only concern. My concern was just with the, the density and being consistent with the other surrounding T3. But I do think we need the development. I'm just not sure that if that 30 unit cap, it's, it still feels a little too much for me. Thank you.
So, so I have a couple of questions. You indicated in, in, in your housing units, so, so what are they consisting of in terms of how many bedrooms, one bedroom, two bedroom? What, what are we talking about?
There are one bedrooms and two bedrooms. I want to say we're about 65% one bedroom. Is that correct, Ralph? 70 to 75% one bedroom and 25% in two bedrooms.
So, so mostly one bedroom's not going to be families for the most part, okay? Number one. The other thing that, so you said you'd build up to the maximum allowed, I guess, is 30, 30 units. But, but you yourself have indicated, and I've seen some of your products, especially the infill housing that you've done and those, those condominium type units you've done. You've done great work, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
But, but, but to stand here and say that you, and you haven't dictated or communicated to us what kind of product we're really going to get, I think is, is, and I'm not, I just don't want you to take it the wrong way. I think you've built good products in the city, so you should be able to articulate what this product is going to look like.
Correct.
I think that's fair. Don't you?
That's fair.
Okay, so understanding that, not really knowing what the product's going to look like, and I can appreciate my colleague's position, but once again, those are things that come to my mind, as well as the density. And I do have just one thought question. This is just from me thinking out loud. Were, was there an opportunity maybe to identify another parcel perhaps that would meet what you were desiring to do?
If it was, we would like to add that as an addition.
Okay, and I'm just, if we're trying to get the win, the ideal would be the win, right?
Yeah.
And, and, and what you proposed in terms of the 55 units or whatever that number was, wouldn't that be the ideal?
Yes.
The economic ideal for you?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I just had those questions and you answered them for me. So unless there are other questions by my colleagues, I think that concludes our questions.
Okay.
So we'll move forward. If you, you would take your seat, we'll move forward with the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and you are not required to have signed up to come speak at this public hearing. If you wish to come forward and speak, you will have five minutes. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Donna Biggs, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. If the Planning Department has standards, then why are people here wanting to override the standards of Planning Department? And the other thing, this is a historic city, as far as just my opinion, that the, when we're thinking about changing the, the outlook of the city, I'm thinking about the people who are going to be stuck in these apartments, all right? Four walls. Where's the garden spot? Where's the gym? Where's the playground? Where's the Civic League that they're going to create? Where's the 4H? Where is it going to be a family unit when you're planning to build? I'm trying to guard my words. Something like this, just in a square box. We don't need that. We need people to have a home where they can enjoy living and breathing in a place that people care, not stuck in a box. Say, okay, just live here. We just want your money. Yeah, that's all we want, your money. All right, thanks for listening.
Once again, this is a public hearing. You're not required to have signed up to come speak at this public hearing. If you do so, you will state your name and address, please, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Wilkins, and I'm president of the Westbury Civic League. And Mr. Parker did come by and expressed to us and showed us a drawing of what he wanted to propose to build. And a few of us, maybe three or four, wasn't in favor of it, but the majority of us that attend the meetings on a regular basis were. We're looking at the fact of moving forward. You know, this is a little bit different than what we're, this Portsmouth is used to. And I've seen some of his other places that he built houses and townhouses, and he did a very good job with them. They kept up very nicely. And not only that, we're looking for to have more tax base for this city. Not only that, we have so many vacant properties in Portsmouth that has been vacant for years, where we could have been having income. Maybe our property taxes will go down. So I'm all for building something new, something different. Yes, okay, like the lady just mentioned, it's not for a big family with children. They have somewhere to play. But it's right across the street from a playground, direct center, they got a walking path, they got an area where the kids can play on the sliding boards if they have children. So it's surrounded by things that families can do. And we must realize, a family is not always a husband and wife and four or five children. A family could just be a husband and a wife, and maybe you have a dog, or a cat, or one child. So we got to, when we say things like this, we got to look at the whole picture and not just a little bit of the picture. So we're all for this property, and I'm not sure I understand all the details as far as what you're all saying, the T3 and the T4, the 30 units or whatever. And not only that, I see the city always approve storage places and car washes. Can't we do something else? Can't we move forward and uplift our city to what it used to be years ago? Can't we do something new and vibrant that's going to draw younger people to our city? And draw up, not only just younger people, other people to our city to see we're vibrant, we're multifaceted, we're not just the same old, same old that it's been all the time. So I'm all for that, and I hope you all will see it, and some of you have expressed that you are, you know, and, and would like to do it. But if all of us could get that mindset and move from the past, and let's move forward and think about the future, what things are coming into, all the intelligence that's coming, for AI, all that stuff that's coming forward. We got to stay on board with what's moving and what's going and what's happening, and stop thinking about the past and what it has been, and it's going to always be that way. We have to move forward. And I just want to say, I just, we appreciate, Westbury appreciates new development coming. Their land has been sitting there for ages, and I'd rather see apartments there than a storage place or a car wash or something like that, because that's going to produce a lot of people coming back and forth, back and forth. At least with these apartments, there'll be people that's going to be working, and they're not going to be home all day sitting around tearing up the neighborhood. They're going to be at work. And when they come home and to keep their place nice, they're going to pay their bills, their rent, whatever, so they can stay there. So I'd rather see something on it than it being vacant forever, in a day. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this public hearing matter, please state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Tony Goodwin. I have an office downtown in 900 High Street, just down from the block, from this property. And with a little bit of institutional knowledge of what's happened over the past and, and relating to the T4 to T3 adjacency, you'll find that actually, that relating to those two types of structures right there at County Street in Elm. So the Victory Square Apartments, which are owned by PRHA, has the same density in what you would consider T4, but now is, I believe, NMU, if, if I'm not mistaken, when we changed the form, from form-based code back to NMU and GMU, and also adopting IL in certain areas adjacent to residences, which was against my suggestions back then, when we made those changes just a few years ago. But, so your density comparisons of T4 and T3 is already happening. And I will also add to the, as a supporter of, of, of good, good planning and good development, that because of the fact that you have a heavily traveled interstate, 264, and no sound barriers on 264 at this point, consider this as a buffer that we don't have to pay for when it comes to sound. Because that building will actually help T3 become a more quieter neighborhood, just for the natural presence of a structure that's going to be four stories tall with, with an interstate less than 150 yards away. So take that as an advantage to increasing a better lifestyle for the folks in T3 and, and applying the same calculations of what you're, what you're suggesting when T3 and T4 are side by side. They're already happening. And thankfully, we have, you know, residents for seniors, which are also in desperate need of affordable housing in our city. So I think you're, you'll find that those, those might answer some of your questions when it comes to that density question. But the benefits, I think, are, are far more better for this property to be utilized in this fashion. And trust me, as an IL-zoned property adjacent to Westbury, we've gone through this process before, and we know what we can and can't do to that piece of property. So it sits there today, undeveloped for, for years because of the things that we'd like to do to it, but we can't. So we'll leave that at that. Maybe next time we'll have a better chance. Thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Goodwin, you brought up the point I was kind of getting to earlier regarding the current zoning of the IL and what the uses were there and what makes sense, which is why I said I was trying to find a happy medium for the density that worked for, based on the recommendations of the Planning Department for T3, because the uses of the IL across from Westbury and that, that, that area, I just didn't see it, just driving by there in my limited time. So I, I can go for it based on some of your information, Mr. Goodwin. The IL designation, I do think I would recommend a change, but the, the, the number of units that we were in discussion of was a concern. So I thank you, Mr. Name, from the Westbury Civic League, you all saying that you're okay with the density there, and then some of the historical information that you're providing. Mr. Goodwin, I appreciate both of those insights, so thank you.
Thank you. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you want to come and speak on this item, come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mark Sterns, and I live on Bradford Terrace over in West Park View. And I'm also a Portsmouth business owner. Mr. Parker and I, although we've never met, are in the same industry. I look at the plans briefly. I haven't studied this project at all, but I do know the location. And it's been vacant a long time. I do wish that he could stand by the, the design that we see there. And if he could do that, I'm all for turning this into some tax base. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If you wish to come forward and speak on this public hearing item, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Hello, okay. I'm not very good at public speaking, so thank you for taking the time. I guess my name is, my name is Cassandra Cobb.
Name and address, thank you.
My name is Cassandra Cobb. I live in the Churchland area, Nottingham subdivision. And I guess for this particular issue, I do have young adult nieces and nephews that would benefit from like the one-bedroom design, because we don't have that in Portsmouth that I, that I am aware of. But my only concern is the pricing and the design of the structure. Mr. Parker, you stated that you would not allow vouchers. So to me, vouchers kind of cross the line with low income. That's just my thinking of how vouchers are. They're used for people who don't have as, as much means, in this case, economic means, money. So my comment was, the pricing for these particular units, would they be beneficial for a paraprof- for a paraprofessional 24-years-old on a salary of maybe $2,500 a month? Would this be good for them? Could they live here? Could they function? Could they be able to pay all their bills, plus enjoy the community as a whole? That's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. You state your name and address, ma'am, you will have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Giovanna Parker. I'm a resident of Norfolk. And I just come to speak on behalf of Satisfied Home Builders in support of the property that he's proposing. As I say that, I'm a Norfolk resident, and Norfolk is building and growing and expanding. And by Portsmouth being a counter-city that's located right under, across the water, and as a resident of Norfolk, and I grew up in the Norfolk area, in the Hampton Roads area, I feel as though Portsmouth needs to catch up. And one thing that would give Portsmouth that opportunity is to provide housing to professional individuals. It's good to have a mixed use of property, not just vouchers, not just traditional residence with families like the lady spoke about, but it's good to have professionals, because when you go to college, graduate, it's always hard for young professionals to get housing. And definitely during these times, a lot of students, I mean, a lot of graduates are living at home because they can't afford housing. So, this would give Portsmouth the opportunity to grow and expand, to give young people an opportunity to come to the city, to work in the city, to teachers, young professionals that's building, starting their own business. So, you just have to expand and look beyond just the traditional Portsmouth and what it used to be, and look at to what's coming, what's next, what's going on for the future. Like the lady also mentioned, you just have, you have AI, you have, it's just so much going on that we, in this community, I feel, could use housing and a mixed use to give opportunities to others, just traditional families, because young individuals are on the rise and accomplishing things, and they need housing as well. So, that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. If you wish to come speak on this item, you can come forward, and you will have five minutes. State your name and address, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the Council. My name is Raphael Winyarek, I'm an employee of Satisfied Home Builders, strictly dedicated to projects like this that I work with for Mr. Parker. There are a couple items that I really wanted to expand upon, since they were touched by a variety of your questions, answers by Mr. Parker, and then discussed by some of the public comments here as well. It is true, Portsmouth needs a variety of homes, residences, traditional housing of a large apartment, and projects like this. Part of our strategy to reach young professionals that would want to come to Portsmouth is pricing to have a door, a bed, a place to live that's close to downtown and it's affordable. During our last meeting with Planning Committee, Commission, we discussed that because we're hoping to offer 30 units in this .79 acres, we wanted to use those economies of scale to pass some savings to the professionals, young professionals. Our analysis indicates that our units, per unit, will be renting approximately 20% less than one-bedroom competition in the area, that's an AB-type property in surrounding areas. Just for your information alone, since that analysis was done in October, November, and now we've revisited it since, comparable properties originally used in the same sample has already increased rents by between 2% to 4%. We're talking about projects here on Crawford Street, just over the last three months, those prices have increased. So, the need for 30 units is to provide lower rents, because we're offering smaller units in such a small space. That's the strategy, how we can help the local residents, or even residents from out of town, so they can move here and work here, and provide benefit to the city. The property such as this, we estimate it will be valued as tax assessment about $3.5 to $4 million, which will be approximately $40,000 worth of tax revenue to the city. One of the more interesting comments made today was the comment of intense. What does intense mean? Intense comment was made before the last committee meeting, and before we chose to take the direction of the council and offer a proffer for the property, which we've added since then. So, originally, an intense property meant we could have built, based on T4, a maximum of 44 units for the .79 acres, which is the 55 per acre calculation. We chose to limit that to 30 units. We initially also have offered a proffer for the design. Upon further evaluation discussion with the Planning Department, we chose to withdraw that design proffer, and this is why. This is a preliminary design, a lot will change. In order to make minute changes, approvals will have to be given, either a staff approvals or even zoning approvals, which means time. So, if we wanted to move the entrance of the building to a different location, or the parking lot, that has to be approved. If we wanted to change the layout changes, make changes to the layout of the building, we'll have to have that approved. Anything that will have to touch the building and be changed has to be approved. That only means delays of the project and potentially making it unfeasible to actually make it available to the public. So, I would like for you to consider those points. We feel, and as Mark Parker has indicated, he grew up in the area, city agrees that this property ought to be used as residential, we feel the same. We're committed to making it 30 units maximum. It may end up less, depending on designs, of course. City streetscapes will be improved, the property will be walkable, parking lot will be in the rear, invisible, so they'll provide some nice visibility. I think the sound barrier component of the discussion is also very compelling. So, there are many positives that really address this property, since it has not been in use for the last 20 years. And if that, I'm going to leave you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer this.
Yes, well, sir, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, one of our renovated properties on High Street, who just opened their apartments, the old professional building, when you say your rents are 20% lower, so for two bedrooms, they're renting at $1,700 a month.
So, my statistics are...
So, hold on, I'm not finished. So, with that in mind, what are your proposed opening costs for a one-bedroom or two-bedroom? I'm just curious to know.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't want to get into specifics, but I'm happy to. So, our analysis suggests that we can achieve the rents I'm going to describe because of the available density of 30 units, to make the economics of scale work for us and the public. So, we believe that a one-bedroom unit that would be in between 660 square feet to 750 square feet, we could rent it and offer it to the public for approximately $1,125 to $1,250. A similar-style unit at a building such as on Crawford, maybe with a pool and other additional amenities like a gym, would rent for $1,411 to $1,739. That's approximately 26% difference for one-bedroom unit. Our mix, we, does not have many two-bedroom units. We decided strategically to, in order to maximize the amount of units in the building. We have approximately 15% to 10% of two-bedroom units in the building, as well as about 10 or so percent of studios.
Okay. And what are your two-bedrooms renting for?
Two bedrooms. We anticipate to be in the $1,450 to $1,500 versus Class A buildings in the area at $1,815 to $1,859. And just so you know, those prices have increased by 2% to 4% since these numbers came out.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak on this item, you come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing, sir, are you coming to speak? Okay. We'll leave the door open.
My name is Gary Behina, I live in Old Town here in Portsmouth. In my past life, I did a lot of land use up in Northern Virginia, mainly in Loudon, Faukeer, in the Warrenton area, did a lot of land use in Maryland. And I'm listening to this argument. And part of the problem, as I understand it, is that as staff or as city, we cannot require proffers. We cannot, and Attorney Graham Williams is nodding, so she's agreeing with me, we cannot go to somebody and say, "You agreed to proffer to build something that is substantially in all material respects, in accordance with the design, the design elements, and the materials, and the locations of what you've proposed." We can't ask that question. I'm not asking that, I'm not here as an applicant, I'm just here as a private citizen, asking a hypothetical question. But if I had asked for a pre-planning meeting, and I had come in and sat down with you, and I had said to you, if I were to propose voluntarily to proffer to build something substantially in all material respects, according to the designs, the elements, and the appearance of what I'm showing you, and I had my pre-planning meeting with you, and I asked you, would that be received more favorably with the 30-count limit? I'm curious what the answer would be. And I ask that question, because if the answer would be, we would meet that more favorably, and I suspect from hearing all the comments, that's what I would have heard in my pre-planning meeting. Then what I would suggest to council is that you defer this for two weeks, or until the next meeting, and you give the applicant a chance to put their money where their mouth is, and voluntarily proffer that they will build something substantially in all material respects, in accordance with the plans, the designs, the materials of what they've shown you. That will allow you all to get the yes. Perhaps you might still have some density concerns, but it sounds like you're moving away with them, especially with Tony's argument about how this could be a buffer zone, sound barrier. But that would allow you all to get the yes, that would remove the doubts about what we're going to get, and what we're going to get something that looks as nice as what we've seen, or close to what we've seen, versus something that is just going to be clapboard, which is not what we want. The price numbers that the applicant's employee just quoted you for one bedroom, using standard 35% as a rent, being your monthly cost, means that your target market for this is about a $45,000 a month, or $45,000 a year person. We want to bring $45,000 a year persons. We have talked, some of us, Councilwoman Hugel, Mayor Glover, about how we want to make this a workforce community. That's workforce salary. That's a number that we want to strive for. I haven't figured it out, I haven't calculated what the two-bedroom would work out, but at one-bedroom, at those rates, we're looking at $45,000. I'd like to see us get to that yes, and I think if you defer for two weeks to give the applicant a chance to voluntarily proffer, as I suggested, we might all get the yes a lot more comfortably. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So, this, once again, public hearing, and you can come forward and state your name and address if you wish to speak on it. Seeing no further speakers, this public hearing is closed. Thank you. Now, to my colleagues on council, we are in need of a motion and a second.
A move for approval?
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, could I amend that?
Let's have it, well, so after the motion and the second, the floor is open for discussion. So, now we're at the point of discussion. So, sir, if you would like to add something to the discussion, you have the floor.
So, I'd like to amend the motion to move to approve with conditions.
We have, we have, we have a discussion...
But there were conditions on the, on the request, right? Okay. So, I withdraw my amended motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote, well, Councilwoman Thomas, did you...
Yes, I just wanted to be clear about...
You want to have a comment?
Yes, I do. The move for approval, it's recommended for denial, so with, can, I just wanted to clarify the motion, the...
Councilwoman, that is a recommendation...
Okay.
...from the Planning Commission. City Council has the ability to overturn that, so the motion is for approval, so that's what you would be voting on.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Moody, are you voting? Is that, okay. So, please vote electronically, I just want to make sure we're not making any more comments. Please... Yes, this is, this is voting for approving the ordinance.
Item is adopted 5-1.
Our next item on the public hearing is Item C, UP-24-11. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution?
Yes, sir. Tyreneck Road, resolution granting the request of M. Davis for a use permit to operate an outdoor kennel at 3114 Tyreneck Road in the General Mixed Juice zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial use. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP-2411, to M. Davis to operate an outdoor kennel on a parcel heaven and address of 3114 Tyreneck Road."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present? If you would please come forward, state your name and address, you will have 10 minutes.
I'm sorry, my name is Sherry Capulano, I'm resident of Portsmouth, I live in Port Norfolk. This is Mark Davis, he's the owner, but he has lost his voice, so I am speaking on behalf of him. He is the owner, I am the facility operator of Port Rover, we are a local pet service for Portsmouth residents. We do grooming, boarding, all that good stuff. We are requesting a fence permit for what is being labeled as an outdoor kennel, but really it's just a fenced-in area for some dogs to go potty in, it's pretty much it. Our original proposal, is this, is there a slide with the actual fenced-in area? Or, okay, yeah. Our original proposal was in the back of the building, which butts up to the RPA, which was declined, because it's in the RPA. So, we moved the fencing to the front per the recommendation of the Planning Department, and that's our new proposed fencing there on the side. It's basically a turf-in area, we limit it to like less than... We limit it to, like, less than two or three dogs at a time in that area to go potty when they come back inside, and that's it. We do not run a daycare out of this facility. There are not twenty to thirty dogs in an area anytime, so don't worry about, like, noise or anything like that. We've talked to the neighbors. Residencies across the street are, I guess, okay with it because we haven't heard anything. Yeah, we submitted letters to everybody. We've talked to a bunch of them. Love them our clients now. So, anything else you want me to do? Okay, I'm not a good speaker. I'm sorry.
It's okay. You did, you did a good job, ma'am. Thank you for that information. If you would remain there for a few minutes, I'm going to ask my colleagues on counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant? No questions for you, so if you would please take your seats.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come and speak on this item, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, then this public hearing is closed. Counsel members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six-zero.
Item D, U.P.-two-four-dash-one-two. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. Victory Boulevard Resolution granting the request of OV Development LLC for a use permit to develop a self-service storage facility on a six-point-three-acre vacant parcel located at forty-fifty-four Victory Boulevard as provided by Section forty-point-two-dash-two-sixteen of the Portsmouth Zoning Ordinance. The property is zoned general mixed-use. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property for commercial use. The Planning Commission recommends denial. The actual resolution for your consideration, "A resolution granting a use permit, U.P. twenty-four-twelve, to OV Development LLC to develop and operate a self-storage facility on a parcel having an address of forty-fifty-four Victory Boulevard."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Once again, for this item, is the applicant present?
No.
Next, we will, we will open the floor because this is a public hearing item for anyone who wishes to come and speak on this item. If you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. For public hearing item, U.P.-two-four-dash-one-two. Are there anyone who wishes to come and speak on this item? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Counsel members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to deny.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically. We have the motion and the second. I understand, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You can vote now.
Please vote electronically.
This item is denied by a vote of six-zero.
That concludes our public hearing items for this evening. We will now move to City Manager's Report. Item twenty-four-dash-one-four. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an Edward Brown Memorial Justice assistance grant in the amount of ninety-two thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars from the U.S. Department of Justice and appropriating said funds in the FY twenty-twenty-five Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department for officer safety, specialized equipment, technology improvement, and the Adult Drug Treatment Court Program.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adoption. Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-five-dash-one-five. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from Ms. Betty W. Gard and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-five Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six-zero.
Next, item twenty-five-dash-one-six. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting additional auxiliary grant program funding in the amount of two-hundred-fifty-seven-thousand five hundred, excuse me, two-hundred-ninety-seven dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-five Social Services Fund for use by DSS.
Thank you. Counsel members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six-zero.
Thank you. Item twenty-five-dash-one-seven. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting additional four-E foster care funding in the amount of thirty thousand forty-one dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-five Social Services Fund for use by DSS for foster care.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to approve. Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-five-dash-one-eight. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting additional family preservation and support program funding in the amount of four thousand four hundred one dollars from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-five Social Services Fund for DSS to provide counseling, protective residential, and transportation services.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item twenty-five-dash-one-nine. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution certifying the City of Portsmouth support of an application for Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation Industrial Access Railroad Track Fund Grant in the amount of seven-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars in furtherance of the development of One Harper Avenue for port-related uses.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our City Manager's Report. We now move to new business, and the first item on new business is item twenty-five-dash-twenty, Boards and Commissions. Councilman Hugel, are you prepared to present the Boards and Commissions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have a lengthy list of appointments and reappointments to our Boards and Commissions. So I'll start with the reappointments. I move to reappoint George Brockman Jr. to the Historic Preservation Commission, Linda Dyer, Amelia Horton, and Patricia Knight to the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Latoya Height to the Law Library Board, Sandra Nicholson to the Library Board, Neil Barber and Malcolm Mitchell to the Economic Development Authority, and Ron Green to the Portsmouth Broadband Authority. I move to make the following appointments. To the Board of Zoning Appeals, Timothy Armstrong. To the Community Criminal Justice Board, our Behavioral Health Services Interim Director, John Quinn Stringer, and Mr. Davey Smith. For Community Policy and Management Team, our private provider is Fitzroy Smith. Our BHS Interim Director is John Quinn Stringer, and the Health Department Representative is Dr. Camida Emret Thomas. For Economic Development Authority, Camille Cherry. To the Law Library Board, Judge Elliot Moody and Attorney Michael Massey II. To the Library Board, Veronica James, Monique Miller, and Rakim Reed. To the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Don Richardson. To the Newport Development Authority, Angela White. To the Parks and Recreation Committee Planning Staff Member, Shawnee Twiman, and Mr. Samuel Forster III. To the Planning Commission, Sheila Glover and Christian Johnson. To the Portsmouth Broadband Authority, Trenton Walker, Sheila Glover, and Jennifer Hughes. And finally, to the Southampton Roads Disability Services Board, Frederick Whittington.
Thank you, sir. Counsel members, we are in need of a motion and a second to accept. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
The recommendations are adopted six-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've now moved to item twenty-five-dash-twenty-one, item submitted by counsel members. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last week, we, we lost a individual in our community who was a pillar of strength, a leader in our community, who served our community very faithfully throughout his time here in the city of Portsmouth, and that is Pastor Milton Blunt of, the senior pastor of New Mount Olivet Church here in the city of Portsmouth. Reverend Blunt was the past, the president, excuse me, of the Martin Luther King Leadership Steering Committee, the president of Church and Community in Action, as well as the former president of the Metro Tidewater's Minister Association. Reverend Blunt did a lot here in the city of Portsmouth. His efforts have never gone unnoticed and just asked that, you know, we be with his family during this time of grievance here that they're experiencing, and that, Mayor, when we adjourn our meeting this evening, that we do so in the memory of Pastor Milton Blunt.
Thank you very much, sir, and I would, I would actually add just a little to that in thinking about the impact of people and what Pastor Blunt committed in terms of his service to our community, to helping our community be a better place to live, work, and play. Certainly, all of our thoughts go out to his wife and Minister Ms. Claudette Blunt and their family. These are times in which we all suffer a great loss, and it's important that we, as community, recognize that. We call ourselves the Portsmouth family, and anytime we lose a family member, we all suffer a loss. So please, the services for Pastor Blunt, if anybody is interested, will be this Thursday at Grove Baptist Church at eleven a.m. Keep his family in your thoughts and prayers, and that will conclude that message. Any other items submitted by counsel? Councilman Tillage?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry. And I also, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the, the loss of our Portsmouth firefighters. We experienced two losses of two of our current firefighters, and so I just want to make sure that we do acknowledge them and that we honor them as well, and we send our condolences to the families of those individuals as well.
Thank you, sir. Duly noted. Are there any other items submitted by counsel? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So maybe on an upbeat side, the mayor and I had the opportunity to, to attend a ship naming ceremony with Secretary of the Navy at the Navy Medical Center Portsmouth last week. There is a brand-new expeditionary medical ship that is set to begin construction, and the ship is the third ship in the class. It's the USNS Bethesda Class, and this particular ship is going to be named USNS Portsmouth in honor of not only Navy Medical Center Portsmouth, but also the community of Portsmouth City supporting Navy Medical Center Portsmouth and the Navy assets that are here in town. So it's an exciting day for the folks who serve our, our community and our Navy at the Navy Medical Center, but also an exciting opportunity for the city of Portsmouth to be recognized as a piece of that ship once she is built and goes into service.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, our report on pending items, item twenty-five-dash-twenty-two. And Mr. Carter, do you have any report on pending items, sir?
Yes, Sir Mayor, thank you. We did have one item from the very last council meeting that's been several weeks ago now, but it is included in your package for your review. If you have any other items that you need a report back on, please let me know, but that item has already been provided to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next item, item twenty-five-dash-twenty-three, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a red light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will see a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe the space rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight will be Michael, oh, yes, Michael Clark. Mr. Clark, if you're here, if you would please come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor of City Council. My name is Michael Clark. I reside at One Crawford Parkway. This is about a driving citation at Norcom High School Zone on London Boulevard. On October the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, at two-thirty-six p.m., I received a driving citation on the sixteen-hundred block of London Boulevard in the Norcom High School Zone. The posted speed limit is forty miles per hour. My vehicle's speed was thirty-nine miles per hour, which was recorded on the citation. I have always been aware that Portsmouth would start issuing citations in school zones starting in January twenty-twenty-four. Because I live at One Crawford Parkway, I use London Boulevard several times a day, five to seven times a week. I am always watching for the school zone flashing lights that state twenty-five miles per hour when flashing. When I first received the citation, I was suspicious because I always look for the flashing lights. I felt pretty confident that the lights were not flashing at the time and date that was written on the citation. So I did an investigation to find out if the lights were accurately synchronized with the police radar location on London Boulevard. I have about six videos on my phone that show that the flashing lights cut off at exactly two-thirty-five p.m. on every school day. So why did I receive a citation at two-thirty-six and thirty-two seconds p.m. while driving thirty-nine miles per hour in a forty-mile- miles per hour in a forty-mile-per-hour zone when the lights were not flashing? Has the city of Portsmouth and the Portsmouth Police Department been issuing citations for an entire year to people after the lights stopped flashing? I believe this is wrong. Not only do I think I should not have to pay this fine, it's my opinion that every citation that has been issued to every vehicle after two thirty-five PM while the lights were not flashing should be refunded their one hundred dollar fine. If you want to issue citations up to two forty PM, you should recalibrate the school flashing lights to turn off at two forty PM on school days. I would like to think and give Portsmouth the benefit of the doubt that this is an honest mistake and not done purposely to collect funds. Because I wanted to contest the citation, I mailed the required section of the first notice back to the address given on the form on November the twenty-fifth. I then received a second notice in the mail on December the sixteenth stating this is a delinquent notice and threatened to take me to a collection agency if I didn't pay immediately. I then called the number on the form and told them that I mailed the required section of the form on November the twenty-fifth because I wanted to contest the citation. They checked and said that they can't find the form that I mailed to them. I also told them that the second delinquent form that was sent to me had a different return last four-digit zip code on the form compared to the first form I received. They then told me to just omit the last four digits of the zip code. So, I mailed the second delinquent notice to the address on the form on December the seventeenth, and they sent it, and I also sent it certified mail this time so they, so I could contest it in court. I did my best to avoid having to contest the citation in front of a judge or make this a situation public. I called the traffic engineering, the signal shop on November the nineteenth and let the phone ring for over a minute, but no one answered the phone, and there was no answering machine to leave a message. I then drove to the Portsmouth Police Station to try to resolve this but cannot find a place to park. There's a limited number of spaces for visitors to park. There were a lot of empty spaces available, which were marked for official vehicles. Visitors are not even allowed to park on the side streets, so I gave up on trying to handle it that way. Thank you for your time. And may I give this to the sergeant?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. David Whitfield. Mr. Whitfield, if you would come forward and state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
My name is David Whitfield. Right now, I currently do not have an address because of the issue that I will be bringing before before the council. I have a video which shows Portsmouth police officers illegally evicting me and my child from a motel room that I had prayed for seven days for. I had been there for approximately a month. This happened at Broad Street, ten fifteen. I, what I have right now is officers counting out money that I do not want for a refund. I do not want my money. I paid, you held my money since twelve o'clock, and now you want to? I don't want to. I do not want that money.
Sir, we can't, we can't hear what you're saying.
That's okay. I would refer this to play. So, how long do I have to leave the premises? How many hours? I mean, it is not a clock. No, 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 no. Hold on, hold on. I gotta stay in this room until eleven? I gotta stay in that room until? I hope we're here. At this point, I did not go to the precinct because I did nothing wrong. This was a civil issue because the cops came to this residence over eight times in under fourteen hours. This is harassment at the least bit. So, after a hospital visit and my ten-year-old son having to go back to his mother, I then proceeded to go to Portsmouth Magistrate Office and Precinct to find out how to file police misconduct charges on the officers that did such. And then when I went there, I was talking to Lieutenant Parker, who then tried himself to first take my internal investigations report himself, even though the professional standards unit at two oh-six High Street was open and available for me to go. I have this video where over ten officers in front of the precinct jumped me while they gave me a fake form, which I do know now, internal affairs are the only people to handle, internal affairs issues. But I have regular cops, and while I sat down in front of the magistrate office to fill out this fake form, I was then arrested, jumped, thrown to the ground, and told that I had a gun on me to come and make, in which they found nothing, not a knife, not any one thing. And after this, I did everything that these cops asked me to do. I have not been in any criminal way. I have been affected by this truly. I have already filed nineteen civil suits against the officers involved, but after nine weeks of waiting, I have not one case number because they refuse to file my civil suits against these officers. Now, I have pulled my foyer for all of this information that I do have here, and my foyer requests were met with defrauding evidence by Mrs. Julia Spicer, who has altered these videos. If you listen to the end of this, they will clearly let you know that I talked to Miss Lieutenant Parker. But there's no clip of me talking to Lieutenant Parker, regardless, even though I made a call to service at approximately four thirty, which would show that the perspective unit was open. Was I let into the records office? No. Threether white gentlemen were, but that day, I had to stand on the outside because they knew why I was coming. They knew what I was there for. This is harassment. No, I'm here making a complaint. And as I sat here, they told me that my lighter was a gun. And as it sat next to me for an over an hour, they then moved it and put it in my bag so they can take pictures of it coming out, so they can verify why.
Is that what you're here for? Okay, so if you want to sit up on this seat, my lieutenant is here. He'd like to probably talk to you.
I've already talked to him.
You want to make a complaint on an officer, right?
I've done everything that a citizen can do to be as forward and as clear with the public as possible. This has happened October the fifth through October, this was three days in a row that I have caked. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Biggs. Ms. Biggs, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Biggs, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood, which does not have any neighborhood meetings to resolve any neighborhood issues. This is my experience living in Portsmouth on the neighborhood level. This is an example of what I am experiencing in the city on a higher level. There are no city meetings to resolve any issues resolved regarding resources and public property in the neighborhoods on the city level. Speaking at the city council is only one-way communication, and nothing is done to address any issues that are brought before it. Even though there won't be anything done to fix the topic for tonight, I have been called to stand up and speak up. The budget book is the foundation to speak about how the people's money is being spent. The budget book doesn't give the reason why money is being spent. How were the people engaged to be part of the decision-making of creating the budget to guard the overspending, the people's money? Where is the finance committee to, so we, the people, know ahead of time what is planned to be spent? When and why? Where is the procurement officer in this process? Where is the municipal organizational chart that provides the names of the people in charge of the departments, along with the boards and commissions chairman? We, the people, need to know who is responsible for each job description so we, the people, can help solve the problems that arise. Let's look at the municipal chart that we have. See the city manager's column? There are three categories listed: economic development, safety, and general government. What is the city manager's role in each of these areas, and why are these categories separated from the whole? The next column is for deputy city manager. What's the name? His oversight includes two human services division, two parks and recreation divisions, and one general government division. What is this deputy city manager's role in each of these areas that are also divided? The next column is for deputy city manager, chief financial officer. What's his name? His oversight is responsible for two general government divisions, plus the general service department, and the two divisions, Public Utilities and Public Works, which includes the office of engineering. The next column is deputy city manager. What is his name? The engineering division, the Department of Parks and Rec, and the Economic Development Division of Permits and Inspection and Planning are listed. Why are these departments divided? In reviewing the budget book on the community and economic development, the business unit listed our community planning and development program, economic development, Newport Community Development Authority, permits and inspection, planning, and convention and visitors bureau. See how the departments and divisions are separated on the different deputy city managers? No wonder our services are interrupted. The next question is, where is the representative government, the people, by the people and for the people? How do we know that? The office of the registrar has a record. There are no ward system for the city. The elected are the trustees to communicate with the people, to overcome the the needs of the people. Okay, the office of the general registrar has a list of voting precincts on this list. The police service areas have been added to the voting precincts. There are five police service areas with the civic league listed. With the three, with the five police service areas, the civic leagues, and each of the five need to come together, create a council of civic leagues for each one, and you will have the structure of the, so that will allow a voice of all the issues on grave concerns is by having our own structure and the lights on, so I can't talk. So, there are five police service areas. Police Service Area One Downtown, Police Service Area Two Craddock, Police Service Area Three Cavalier Manor, PSA Four Hodges Manor, and PSA Five Churchland. So, let us get together so we can self-govern, so y'all don't have to do anything but pay attention.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Sergio Neal. Mr. Neal, come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Happy New Year to all of you all. It is, I'm glad to be here on the first official regular council meeting. I'm so glad to see the progress that has been made in the in the progression of this council and the new leaders that have come. Some have moved from other places on over here. Some are new to the game period, so we welcome you. I'm here tonight to address a very important topic. There was a situation that took place involving our Parks and Rec Department in December and a community organization, New Generation. Situation arose that the the ask to store equipment by this organization at Neighborhood Facility Recreation Center, it came under fire as there was a discussion of the equipment of the city being held liable for the equipment should something happen to it. I I will say that the communication with Mr. Palmer Chuck has been astounding. He has really, really, really gone above and beyond to try to bring a resolution through his leadership, Mr. Carter, to find some medium for this organization. Community-based organizations such as New Generation bring a solid foundation to this community. They provide a safe haven for our youth. They provide a training ground for our youth. They provide leadership development for our youth. So, when you put a burden on a community organization that has been operating in this city for over thirty years as to say, hey, sorry, yes, you can practice, but you have to move your equipment back and forth, keep in mind, all of the parents that are have children as a part of this organization don't have the means to provide transportation for their kids, let alone equipment on top of that. So, that becomes a burden on the few parents like myself that have offered provisions for to move this equipment around. Now, you know, speaking from my standpoint, and I know that in past times, Neighborhood Facility hosted, was a practice ground for other community-based bands, the equipment was stored at that facility, and there was never issue. When Ms. Edie, Michelle Edie, was the recreation superintendent, she made sure that organizations like New Generation were taken care of because she knew the value of what those organizations brought to the city. So, I I would hope that, and I ask, you know, what could, even if I had to pay, I personally was going to pay the city for a small portion of that facility. That facility is two-story, has plenty of rooms that's not being used. That facility has been around longer than I have been on this earth. So, and it's all honestly underutilized, to be honest with you. If you ever go to Neighborhood Facility on any given day, you will see that there are still, there are kids that are there, but most of those kids that are there on Monday and Wednesday nights are a product of New Generation. With about a hundred-plus kids on those nights packing that facility to make sure they get, they they practice and try to attract other kids to that facility. So, I would hope that there is some medium that is brought to this resolution that do this issue. Maybe our city attorney can offer, you know, hey, simple contract, city is not held liable. That that's, that's all, that's all the ask is somewhere for this equipment to be stored. That way, it's not such a burden. That way, we can make sure that, you know, that, and we do our part. I can say, we do our part to make sure that the center is clean once, once practice is over, there is no riffraff going on because we don't tolerate it as far as the band parents and the leadership of that band. We try to also be a positive example for those other kids that are in a recreation center and say, hey, this is what you can come to the center. One of many great organizations you can be a part of, should you come to Neighborhood Facility Recreation Center or any of the recreation centers in Portsmouth for that matter. I I don't, you know, I get it, you know, there is always a liability thing. I get that. But at the same time, too, there is means and ways to rectify that situation. So, I will hope that we can come to a conclusion on this issue so we can all be better stewards of our property, that, you know, that at the end of the day, it's funded by we, the taxpayers, to make sure that we are welcoming to our community organizations to say, hey, this is where, you know, we can do something for those that are being positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mark Godoldig Yatrowski. Mr. Yatrowski, you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and other neighbors. I'm going to set aside the items that I had intended to speak about. They've been preempted by- They've been preempted by the events that have taken place here tonight, and I want to raise a question as to why the two speakers who preceded me, the gentleman who had an issue with the enforcement of the speed limits in the school zone and deficiencies thereof, and the gentleman who alleged that he was the victim of police misconduct. Why was no referral given to those gentlemen, to someone within the city administration to help them get the matter sorted? It makes this council look uncaring, and knowing all of you, to one extent or another, that would be an unfair characterization. So I'm bewildered as to why there's this open loop here instead of some sort of attempt to follow up and get clarification, if nothing else, of what was presented. It's not your responsibility to answer complaints such as mine in this setting, but when somebody comes seeking, uh, help with a problem with the city, there should, in my view, be an attempt to connect that person to somebody who can help get the matter sorted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Merle Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, if you would come forward, sir, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Merle Rutledge. I do not get out my address because I believe at this time, period, I'm protected by the whistleblower law. I come before you elected leaders as arms of the state, meaning you share the same power as the state as well as the local government, as well as every single voter in the state as well as those in this city. The Virginia election statewide as well as local to town and county has been compromised. Yes, it has, through the use of artificial intelligence. See, in Virginia, state agencies can manually change A.I. systems, but they must adhere to the specific guidelines and standards. Governor Glenn Youngkin, Executive Order Thirty establishes A.I. policy and information technology standards to safeguard the state's databases and individual data. The order also created an A.I. task force comprising of ten A.I. experts. Who are these experts? Who are these fact-checkers to provide advice to policymakers and state agencies on using A.I. responsibly and effectively?
Point of order. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, our speaker rules require that the speaker speak on a topic that city council has some authority over. So far, I haven't heard anything that city council has authority over, so unless the speaker has...
Excuse me, sir.
Sir, 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 you're out of order. You do not have the floor.
Okay. I would hope I have a chance to respond.
No, no, you do not have the floor at this point until the councilman, and at that point, we will deal with the point of order, and then you will be instructed on how to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you. Sir, please finish what you were saying.
Yeah, so I, I think the speaker should either come back in compliance with speaker rules or should be asked to sit down.
Thank you, sir. Point of order accepted. So as the rule states, sir, you have to speak on items in which the city council, you're required to speak on items that city council can affect. We cannot affect the subject matter that you are discussing at this time. So therefore, you have two options. You can redirect something that the city council to the effect is something we can affect or we can, we can handle as a council, or you can respectfully have your...
Didn't you pledge an oath to the United States of America and the Virginia Constitution to hold all leaders accountable, foreign or domestic, from anything ever heard of? And our elections won't be compromised by artificial intelligence. What they are doing to you and me and everybody else, Democrat or Republican, do a search on A.I. and look at your registration. You won't show up as a Democrat, you'll show up as a Republican.
Sir, you have already been instructed. I've given you an option. You will no longer have an option. This is your choice. Either change your language or have a seat.
Thank you for the opportunity, Governor. Thank you for the opportunity. I already said what I needed to say.
Thank you, sir.
And what I said is exactly, let me finish this off because you said I had the chance to rephrase.
Sir, you are, you are done, sir. You're done. That concludes our speakers for this evening. I thank you for coming to the city council meeting. With no more business to conduct, we are all adjourned.